We're good to go.
Okay, it looks like it is 6:30, so I will call the meeting to order. And can I have a roll call, please? You're muted right now, Renee.
Okay, let's try this again. Ms. Bayhan?
Here.
Ms. Zink?
Present.
Mr. Beck?
Here.
Mr. John?
Here.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Jablonski?
Here.
Ms. Williford?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
And Ms. Byrd?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving to consent items, item two, TMP-166, approval of the March 11th, 2021 Planning Commission Regular Session Minutes. I would, does any member of, I'm sorry, does any member of the commission wish to remove any item from the consent docket? Does any member of the audience wish to remove any item from the consent docket? And if so, announce which only item they are being told to be discussed in a regular order? Okay, I would take a motion.
So move back.
Well, a third second. And a vote.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
The motion carried nine to zero.
Okay, our next moving to non-consent items, we are going to a item three, O-2021-40. S.W. Armstrong Jr. and John Trau request rezoning from PUD planned unit development to C3 intensive commercial district for approximately 0.32 acres of property located at 220 South Porter Avenue. And I believe we have a staff presentation.
This is Brevin Gorm with the Planning Community Development Office, presenting Armstrong and John Trau rezoned in 220 South Porter from PUD to C3 intensive commercial districts. So around it, the existing zoning right now, for the most part, is all C2 and C3. Here is on the south side, I1 for the industrial districts. The existing land use as of right now, on the north is a vacant bank. On the east, here is an auto repair shop. On the south is where Highlands factory is. And on the west is the Highlands parking lot for their trucks. And this would be the aerial view for 220 South Porter. This is looking on the east, so across the street from 220 South Porter, this is the auto repair shop that's located across the street. This is big looking north from the property. I mean, south from the property. This would be looking north. This is also kind of looking southwest. And this is looking across the street as well. And this is where the existing gym is right now at 220 South Porter. And this is the building where they are going to want to put a dispensary at some point. And that'll be it. The outfit does have a presentation, and I'll be here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Oh, sorry.
Staff presents this request for rezoning and ordinance number O-2021-40 for consideration by Planning Commission.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me how many dispensaries are in the area within several blocks?
Did you say within several blocks?
Yes.
I'm not really sure in this exact vicinity how many there are. I know, sorry, this is Laura. And not Jane, do you know how many in the downtown area?
So we don't have an exact number, but I will tell you that just half a block north of this location actually puts them too close to the school, Longfellow School, that is over to the northeast of this location. So, and I'm thinking in my mind, I know I've driven by there and looked at the site. I don't, I don't know of any that are in close proximity here. And like I said, it's due in part to the location of Longfellow.
Friendly Market's right across the street.
Oh, Friendly Market, that's right, you're right.
I know where these places are.
I did, it's down, it's down one, is it down one block, Dave, or is it?
Yeah, one block.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so that puts it further south from Longfellow, so that's what the difference is. I do want to add that Renee was kind enough to share with us from a follow-up question from last meeting that according to the city clerk's data, there were 53 dispensary licenses, 17 processing licenses, and 60 grow licenses for the city of Norman. That was an email we had received as a follow-up on March 18th. For the entire city, not just the area. Any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I would take the applicant presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Byrd. This is Gunner Joyce with Rieger Law Group. And I will share a quick presentation with you. Really here for just a house cleaning matter as we're seeking to revert back to the original C3 zoning for this property. Here's the location map. We're at the corner, as you just saw, of Uphalla and Porter. Real quickly, here's an existing aerial similar to the one you just saw. The zoning of this property is currently a PUD that was done in 2017. And really, that was done for one single user, it was a motorcycle shop that is no longer at the property. And so the property owners would like to go back to C3, the way it was before the 2017 PUD. And which is, as you can see, compatible with all the surrounding C3s in this area. No change required for the 2025 plan as this property is designated for commercial uses. Here's a real quick street view. It's not as up to date as the pictures you just saw. They were from yesterday, but just to orient you, this picture is on Porter looking towards the Porter and Uphalla intersection. As you just saw, this is currently a gym. This is an empty space, leasable space. There's two leasable spaces here. One currently occupied was the gym, one vacant. And then just again, a quick summary. The existing PUD was for motorcycle sales and service business that was not allowed in C3. And so the PUD essentially only added that allowance. This is now stripping that allowance from the property as that is no longer applicable and seeking to return back to C3. The staff reports note that there's no impact expected on the property because of the similar zonings in this area. We're not aware of any protests. I'm happy to take any questions, Joanna.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Erica, I have a question. In fact, it's just a comment. Gunner, I have no problem in basically approving C3, but my concern again is having so many dispensaries that are being opened, especially in the vicinity. It's, it's just a growing concern that what are we really going to see after a year, two years, and three years? I mean, that, that is my concern.
To respond, I know you weren't really posing a question to me there, but we typically, the zoning level just kind of let the market dictate those kind of end users. And here, I could pull the map back up, but as you see, this entire area is zoned C3 and C2, which both would allow for dispensaries and other marijuana uses. So while I understand the sentiment that was echoed earlier during the earlier question and answer with staff, and I understand your comment as well, it's really not a consideration of zoning at this level.
Dan, I would say that this gets into the same kind of thing, you know, that's what capitalism is all about, is putting in what people can make money at doing. We've had the problem on Campus Corner with the form-based code, you know, going student housing, and that's all that's been built. We didn't show much concern about that. I guess there's been some. But, you know, unless we can find a way that the city can have more influence on how things develop in a more cognitive and intelligent way, we're kind of animals and captive to the whole capitalistic system, unfortunately.
Just want to remind everybody to please mute their line if they are not speaking. Thank you. Are there any other questions of the applicant? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so audience comments. I'll open it to that. Just a reminder, if you would like to make a comment, please begin by stating your name and address. Seeing none, I'm open to Planning Commission discussion.
At Williford, at the risk of opening a bag of worms, I feel this comes up every meeting. So I just want to echo Dave's sentiments. I feel like we, as a commission, are here for zoning, not approval or disapproval of the businesses that are legally allowed to operate. And it's our job to, there's owning. So if their landlord has an agreement of a legal operating business, I feel like that's between the landlord and the business. And I think that it's important that we keep that in mind and that we keep separate what our job is from what landlords and tenants do as their job. So I just want to keep that in mind. We're not questioning other businesses. We're not questioning gyms. We're not questioning liquor stores. We're not questioning everybody else. So that's all I have on that.
Well, one comment I might make is if you look at the number of law offices in this neighborhood, there's about 10 times as many law offices as there are dispensaries. And so, and I don't want to judge who uses those office buildings. I'm glad that they've been fixed up and full of spaces because when they don't have anybody in them, we don't collect taxes. So that's my only comment.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I agree with the sentiment that the surrounding area, C3, is able to convert it back to C3 zoning. But I do think that our comments move on to the council. And so if we, if we give some comments along the lines of we're concerned about a certain industry proliferating too much, whatever that is, I think it's reasonable to have those comments as part of this meeting that the city council can see that we're concerned.
And fortunately, we have one of my favorite city council people here tonight, listening in to all of what we're saying. So, and I know she will respond. And this takes me back to, I've been on the Planning Commission long enough to remember when one of the other great real estate attorneys in Norman, Harold Hyple, used to tell us regularly that we were only here as a recommendation body. We were not here to make policy, and if we did make policy by voting against his project, he would take our butts to court. We heard that lots. So Sean, I thank you for not following in his footsteps.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Commissioner Beck moved to approve.
Okay, and a vote.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. John?
No.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
The motion carried eight to one.
Okay, moving to the next item, it's, two items are 2021-101. Jeffrey Ayers, DBA Amphibious Power Sports LLP requests amendment to the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan from county residential designation to mixed-use designation for approximately five acres of property located at 3766 East Robinson Street. And item O-2021-37, Jeffrey Ayers, DBA Amphibious Power Sports LLP requests rezoning from A to Rural Agricultural District to PUD planned unit development for approximately five acres of property located at 3766 East Robinson Street. I believe we will have a staff presentation. And I, maybe a clarification if there's going to be a request to postpone one item or both of said items.
There's a request to postpone both of those items to next month.
Okay. Okay. Since we're, we're looking at a postponement, I think it'd be fine for us to go ahead and just take a motion to allow that.
I'm moved.
And a vote.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
The motion carried nine to zero.
Thank you. Moving to our next item, O-2021-39. Katie Construction Company requests rezoning from R2 to Family Dwelling District to SPUD simple planned unit development for property located at 111 and 113 East Acres Street. I would love to hear the staff presentation on this one.
All right. Hi, Laura Hoggitt with the Planning Department. So we have an application from Katie Construction to rezone to a SPUD simple planned unit development from R2 at 111 and 113 East Acres Street. Requesting the SPUD to have a smaller lot width so they can do three lots with a single-family home and an accessory dwelling unit on each lot. So it is currently zoned R2. The northeast and west is also R2. And to the south is R3. There is a park on these two lots. And they are all in the central Norman zoning overlay district. There was a big house on this lot, excuse me, on this lot that has been demoed. And it's surrounded by single-family houses, and then, as I said, the park to the south. And we don't have an updated aerial since it's been demoed, but this is the subject property. So here it is after being demoed. This is looking east on Acres. This is the park across the street to the south. Looking west towards the railroad tracks. And then there's a home across the street as well. The applicant is on the call. I have some, some slides for him. And then staff forwards this request. And ordinance O-2021-39 for your consideration. And we're both available for questions.
Any questions for the staff?
Hi, this is Naman. Basically, there's something as auxiliary drilling behind each unit. Can we have some more details on that?
Yes, I think, I think Keith will go into a little more detail on that. But it'll be a main dwelling unit in the front on Acres. And then it'll be garages with accessory dwelling units above on the second floor in the rear of the lot by the alley.
Any other questions for staff before we go to the applicant presentation?
This is Mark Daniels. I just had a question about parking. It appears there's three spaces for each, each unit. Is that adequate according to code?
Yes, so there will be, code requires, well, the normal zoning ordinance would require two spots for each dwelling unit. So this will have, the garage will have two spaces, and then there will be two spaces for the accessory dwelling unit, just on the driveway. But maybe Keith, I have more info about that, too.
I was just wondering with four bedrooms and a garage apartment, if that was an adequate number? That's, that's my only question. Just, just a question.
Any other questions for staff? I'd like to open to the applicant presentation.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Keith McCabe. I am the owner of Katie Construction Company. We are a small, local building company that works primarily in the core Norman. We purchased this property, just, I don't know if, not so that if everybody's familiar with it. But this piece of property, which is in there, it's been boarded up since 2009. It actually had received a fire back in 2009. There was a demolition permit scheduled. They never demoed the property, and they ended up building the original garage apartment to the west. And that's where the people lived. And the actual roof structure of this house had been open to the elements for the last 10, 11 years. So it was completely disintegrated when we bought it. I have been involved with City of Norman from the charrette from 2015, trying to figure out affordable housing, trying to figure out how we can build better housing in the core Norman. Just to make, to bring you up to speed with what, why I'm here tonight is whenever you remove a building, the only requirements that the city has to go by are the subregs, which are in a greenfield project development, which is the same as a brand-new development. That development requires a 50-foot frontage, 100-foot depth for 5,000 square feet. This property is 125 wide, 140 deep, so 17,500. We're proposing and asking to divide this up at 41.66 feet wide. You know, the, in what the greenfield subregs require. But we have an additional 40 feet deep within the minimal. So instead of 5,000 square foot, we're actually at 5833 per property. I just wanted to, I have built a couple of houses in that area, brand-new buildings. We built one on the west side of Andrews Park, which is a white two-story home that fits into the neighborhood. That's our intent to build here, that we continue that style and the character that fits the existing neighborhood. When we built these, we were blessed to meet a lot of people. And there's, there's two complete categories here. First one is the people that love the old home and the characteristics that go with it. And so I've actually done a lot of remodels in Norman on the existing old home. We're working on a 100-year-old home right now with a complete remodel. And, you know, we make the old home look new. But there's also another category of people that like an older-looking home, but brand-new. So that's what we're hoping to bring over onto Acres, is a more affordable project, a still walkable, because we love the area, we love the vicinity right there by the park. I think from being from the charrette from 2015 all the way through this, I believe that there's a need for housing to be built on some of these lots. And so I'm coming to you tonight to answer any question. I want to point out that I've asked a drafts person that helps me draw my plans. His name is Dan Bowman. He's here to help us. Plus, because of knowing how much the city of Norman worries about stormwater and drainage, I actually reached out to Terry Pollak, who's an engineer. Terry's on the call with us, too. We actually did a full stormwater drainage report for this lot. And after it probably took six to seven months of back and forth between the engineer and us designing property, actually allowed us to build these properties without causing any stormwater onto the neighbors. So we wanted to prove that we can build new structure with careful consideration to the neighborhood, to the neighbors, and to make this a feasible project that's to go forward. So that's my presentation. If there's some questions you guys have, I'd love to answer them for you.
Any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Keith, can I see the floor plans, like slides 25, 26, 27, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir. And, and, and please let me explain what we've done is to get our numbers. When you do a, the city of Norman on any new construction, they require a 65% impermeable rate, and 35% has to be green space. With what we're presenting is because we're going to build a product that's an actual for-sale product for single-family. So what we've done is we've actually are going to let the community, going to let the market to dictate the size of the house, the shape of the house, and what we build. But what we've done to make these numbers work, we look at the original site plan. It goes the house at 1,535 square foot. It shows the ADU at 400 square foot sitting above the garage with the existing driveways, sidewalks, parking lots. We actually brought down We actually brought down the impervious down to fifty-one percent, which is fourteen percent lower than the standard. And what we're asking to do is we are going to be bound by that site plan. So as long as I don't grow any house bigger, the footprints that are shown, those numbers will stay the same. So we're not for sure if we're going to build, this is in the SENSOG area. And what that means is anything that has more than four bedrooms has to be sprinkled. We're not for sure if we're going to build four bedrooms in a home. Cost of material has gotten crazy right now. So we're just, you know, we understand the SENSOG. We understand what the zoning is. We understand what we're asking. And I'm asking for the permission for you guys to, to look at the site plan. Understand that we're going to build a house that fits the character of the hap, the neighborhood. Going to fit the community, the neighborhood manners, because that's very important. And that's why we named this project Gateway, because we believe this is the first project starting over in the Silk Stockings area. And I understand the responsibility that comes with being the first one to build there.
Any other questions for the applicant? Keith, I have one, uh, just to follow up on the parking question that was posed to staff and a single unit for each one. And then is, you know, speaking of parking, how much parking can be there? What's the surrounding parking look like? And I know we discussed this being a walkability, you know, area, but assuming, let's say there are cars, where would cars go?
What we're looking at is that we have a, basically a single car drive in the front, which will allow for one car. You have two cars that could park in the back, in the garage, or then you have an additional two cars that could park on the parking pad in the back. So you told, you truly could get five vehicles on the property. I want to make it really clear that this project, I am not building this project for the idea that it just becomes a complete rental project. We're building this as a single family home to sell to a single family. That is why I chose on the ADU to completely keep all of the utilities on the ADU connected to the main house. We're not, we're not separating them. It will be one water meter. It'll be one electric meter. It'll be one gas meter. We truly want to make this a multi-generational product that if a young company, couple wants to buy this house because of the location to Andrews Park, because of downtown, and, and, and they feel the need that they might want to rent out their ADU to help with their mortgage, I can agree to that. If, if somebody wants to bring a child home after they graduate and they don't have a, you know, and, and they're not in the workforce. I have children myself that have graduated school and, and the time it took before they were able to find a job. They consider themselves adults. They didn't want to move home with mom and dad, but they couldn't afford to be out there. This allows that opportunity. And please understand the ADUs and what we're asking for are completely allowed in that area right now. We have purposely brought down the size of the ADU to five hundred square foot, because that was always the big comment and discussion in this area about the size of an ADU. What was allowed, because we've actually seen houses built as ADUs that are actually larger than the existing house. So that's why I put that language in there. And for a purpose to show that this truly supposed to be just an accessory building, not a complete other house, not a complete separate rental property. I want it all to be part of the same needs. And guys, if you have any questions, I think we presented the stormwater here. And this is Terry Pollak that's here. Terry did the stormwater for us. And please understand that this was not required for us to do on this project at all. But I know how important stormwater is to us. I know how important it is to our neighbors. So we stepped out, we presented this in front of you. Terry spent a lot of time with this. Dan spent a lot of time for us to get these footprints, footprints correct. Because I want to prove that we can build intelligent housing on what we don't call typical lots. And so, and I think this project will prove that.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I'd like to open to audience comments. Not seeing any audience comments, so I'd like to move to planning commission discussion. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, it took me a second to figure out how to unmute. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. Uh, Russ Kaplan, I'm a resident of Ward Four and also a landlord, uh, in Ward Four. Just because I've been paying attention, uh, to, uh, the city center farm-based code, which doesn't apply here, but I think it's applicable to add to the discussion that, I don't know how many of the commissioners, I know Dave and I'm sure several of the others were present for all that. And, um, you know, a lot of the discussions centered around the, uh, large multi-tenant student housing, which I, a lot of times here, other Ward Four residents bring that up as an objection to things that might happen in Silk Stocking. And as a landlord, I just want to assure anyone that thinking, is thinking that's a concern, that at acres, that is not a target for high density student housing. The kids won't walk past Main Street. They won't walk past, really, UFAL is kind of pushing it. So if you're thinking student housing is a concern in Silk Stocking, you don't understand the student rental market. So I just want to throw that out there.
Any other audience comment?
Uh, my name is Terry Pollak. I, uh, worked on the engineering with Keith on this. My, my, may I make a comment in regard to the things that Keith had in mind and what it produced?
Yes, and if you don't mind, just state also your address too. Apologies.
My address is, uh, seven zero zero six Northwest Sixty-third in Bethany. And my company's name is SDP Solutions. And in reality, I am not, so that the board is of, the, the professional board doesn't come down my throat. I'm not an engineer. Uh, the engineer that reviewed this and approved it all is Darren Teeman. But I did do the design work for Darren Teeman. But one of the things I wanted to mention that I think is, is and it's really Keith's doing, I think, but, but he's put a lot of time into, into what I, how would I call it? A, uh, an environmental, a little more environmentally, not environmentally friendly site. Because as you look at the site plan, it seems like, wow, this is a whole bunch of stuff crammed into this little area here. Well, it is. There, there's a lot of, of impervious there. But the way the site laid out for grading and drainage, which was what my job was, it, uh, it really doesn't, the increase in the water has basically, there's a, a little, a little tiny bit of increase in water from the historic rate. But that is, is contained in a, in the back of the auxiliary units, those impervious pavers that are there. And you can see that through the cross-sections in that design report that I have. But that will truly allow this site to have virtually, uh, the same, it, it will allow a historical release of water. So, so you'll have a brand new site. And you know, that's even hard to do in reality, uh, on any site, to, to, to do something new and not have to put a detention pond in somewhere. So there's no detention pond and, and everything is, is tight in there. But, uh, with the proper maintenance and, and the things that are needed, uh, the features there will work quite well. And, and the impact on the city from a, from a drainage perspective, it, it, there won't be any. There should not be any whatsoever. So and in reality, probably even less issue with the city than that original home that was there, because it will be cleaned up and, and, uh, prepared properly. So I think that the report, not that I, not that I did that great a job, but, but Keith's instructions on how to do it, we went through it along a lot of times. But from an engineering perspective, it's going to truly, uh, it won't harm your drainage issues whatsoever. It should, uh, stay with the status quo. So that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you. Do we have any other audience comments?
Are we ready to move on?
Yes, I think we are. Just, uh, go ahead and move to discussion.
Okay, well, I'm going to make some comments. First of all, I welcome Keith's project. He does great work. Uh, what, he's been my favorite developer on Campus Corner, and pretty much everybody here and everybody in town knows exactly how I feel about the kind of development that we've gotten on Campus Corner and over in the Miller District. Because it's been, um, that's why people are afraid of student housing. I didn't hear Keith say student housing one time, but on my project, which is still pretty tender, the one on Park Avenue, there was a lot of accusations flying about, uh, doing a duplex for student housing in that area. And, uh, one of the things that's always impressed me about Keith is if you look at the stuff that became apartments on Campus Corner, specifically on Jenkins, he saved all the existing properties that were there and added on to them. Uh, he didn't tear down existing housing, uh, to build up bigger housing. And so, um, I will say I support this project because we talk about, um, um, having higher densities, so there's walkability, so there's a, a cleaner and healthier and safe community. But we have to get over that whole idea of anything that's built higher density is going to be, um, student housing. Um, and so I appreciate Keith's extra work, uh, to also get people out the city and city council to understand that, uh, ADUs are important. There are many places where ADUs are allowed, not just in Nor, and not in Norman. But, uh, there's lots of reasons to have them, like Keith said, for kids, for parents, for, uh, family, for a rental property, because houses are getting expensive. And for a place, um, if a caregiver ever came to stay with you. And the fact that he's making these units accessible on the first floor, it shows that his concern is real and that his actions are real too. So, I am, uh, I think this project is a good way to start out. What's going to happen in many parts of Norman, and that's higher densities. Uh, because one, we can't afford to build the big houses that people have, have been building. And two, we need to get, I think you use the term intergenerational, we need to have families living together. So there now.
Thank you, Dave. Any other discussion? I just want to second, Ma, Dave actually did a really good job, I think, of summarizing a lot of my same sentiments on this, specifically on ADUs and looking at accessibility, looking at multi-generational housing. I think these are great ways that we can increase density and do it respectfully. Um, I think these are exactly the type of developers that we want to have and developments we want to have. People that are local, that care about the integrity of our community. And at this particular site, I, this is one of those places that I drove by many times and probably many people said that somebody should do something about that. And seeing somebody actually take the initiative and do something about that is fantastic, especially after, you know, as he mentioned, there was ten years of there being an open hole in the roof and just, I mean, boarded up house there. In one of a, one of the more interesting neighborhoods that we have in Norman. So I'm very excited to see this project. I've been following it leading up to this and excited to see it coming. I'm excited to see the use that he really is aiming to have this be single family housing. Having more density and development that's going to be having affordability built into it, multi-generational. A lot of the same things Dave said, I just can't second enough, I guess. So I will be voting yes for this. Is there any other discussion for this item?
Um, I, I think I did forget to mention, we received some support letters. Renee, how many did we?
It's refreshing getting support letters on a project rather than a handful of complaints.
Jane counted twelve letters.
And Keith wrote every one of them.
No, he didn't write any of them.
I know, I know.
I was actually impressed that so many of those letters were not just a form tablet and people had taken the time to custom write each letter, it seems like we received for the most part. So that showed the support of the community around that they took the time to do that. Okay, I would entertain a motion if we don't have any more discussion.
Well, I was going to move.
I'll second.
Willa Ford second. End of vote, please.
Ms. Bayham?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
The motion carried nine to zero.
Thank you. Moving to
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for believing in me and my vision. As we move this forward, I promise you, you will be proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving to our next item, O dash two zero two one dash three eight. Peter Petromealy requests special use for dwelling units with four or more bedrooms for property zone CCSDC Urban General Frontage, located at four thirty South James Garner Avenue. And I believe all we need to do is postpone for this. So I would take a motion for the postponement.
Don't move.
End of vote.
Ms. Bayham?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
And Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
The motion carried nine to zero.
Okay, moving to miscellaneous discussion. Do we have any miscellaneous discussion from commissioners? Or staff too, sorry.
Well, I'm just going to encourage us to keep, uh, encouraging city also to find these kind of gem projects to show that we can build higher density, but affordable and, and attractive and accessible housing anywhere if we just put our minds to it.
I agree. Okay. Seeing no other miscellaneous discussion, um, if there's nothing else to come before the commission, I'd like to declare the meeting adjourned.
Thank you all, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.